Greetings. It's 7:30. Toastmasters start on time. Thank you for coming tonight. Without further ado, I'm going to warmly welcome up our president, Dennis Comas.
Thank you, Jean. Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have all of you here. We're honored to have you all as guests, potential new members, fellow Toastmasters, yours at home, and our honored speaker, Troy Van Beek. We're all glad to have you here. The mission of our club is to provide a mutually supportive and positive learning environment in which every member has the opportunity to develop oral communication and leadership skills which in turn foster self-confidence and personal growth. As Toastmasters, it's our mission to uphold these values, to do the best to spread them all to our community, and we're honored to have you all. As a quick show of hands, for whom of you here is this your first Toastmasters meeting you're ever attending? Great, excellent. Well, welcome, everybody. It's a great first time. We meet here every Tuesday at 7:45, right here in the clubroom, high V, next to the ice cream aisle. Easy to remember, always good treats around. Also, as a quick show of hands, how did you all hear about this event? Did you guys hear through Facebook?
Weekly reader.
Weekly reader.
Weekly reader. Yeah, show of hands, who heard it from a weekly reader here? Great. From Facebook? Great. From posters? Nice. Word of mouth, you've got it. Anything else? Any other form of getting to know about the meeting? Oh, that's great. Good to see that all. This is the time where we start the meeting, kick it off. We are honored to have our Toastmaster, Jean Samington Craig, here. Let's give her a warm welcome.
Before we get started, we have a couple of housekeeping details. Devices. If you have your device with you, put it on off or really quiet, vibrate unless if you have a life or death emergency that you need to be paying attention to. Hopefully, it's gonna wait until after the meeting. So we do wanna have, you know, I mean, you know, just think positively. Turn the devices off if we can do that, so we don't have any interruptions. Perfect. Secondly, you have a job to do tonight. Clapping. It's hard to get up here and do some of these things that we're doing, and we actually want everyone who comes up here to feel really appreciated. So we're gonna do a clap practice really quick, okay? Now, clapping, there's a speed component to it as well. So what does this sound like?
Boring.
Yeah, boring, not interested. As opposed to, can someone demonstrate fast clapping? Yeah. Okay. Yes. You feel the energy go up? So that's your job. Now, we have Toastmasters, members, golden speakers throughout the room. They will be helping you know when to do this, but feel free to join in, and it does make the evening more lively. Okay, so that's your job. Now, we do have some role players that we wanna, that I wanna introduce, particularly one. I'd like to introduce our timer for the evening, Will Burns. Will, would you tell us how you'll be timing the meeting, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Jean. As a timer, we wanna show respect both to our speakers and evaluators, but also to you, the audience, and make sure that we start and end on time. So it's a timer. My job is just to keep track of that and just give you a sense of everybody where we're at in the meeting. So I'll be evaluating three things tonight, or I'll be timing three things tonight. One, I'll just keep track for the speaker himself, just for his own reference, with green at 15, and amber at 17:30, and the red at 20, just so he knows where he's at. We'll have table topics, green at 1 minute, amber at 1:30, and red at 2. And then for the evaluation, green at 2, amber at 2:30, and the red at 3. And I'll keep track of all this on this hand. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Will. All right. This is a little tricky clapping for me, but I'm working on it. So, you know, if I can do it, you guys can do it. So, and you already sound really good. We want to have this meeting, some, we wanna give you some samples of things that we do in a regular Toastmaster meeting. This is a special open house. So it's not quite our usual weekly meeting, but we want you to have some flavors. Some of you have been here before, maybe you've seen some of this, but we're gonna start with table topics, which is the impromptu speaking muscle in our communication skills. And to lead us on the table topics section of our meeting is one of our Toastmasters, golden speakers. Please help me warmly welcome, Fraser Jones.
Madam Toastmaster, fellow members, esteemed guests, good evening. This evening, you are going to experience one of the most interesting and exciting parts of a normal Toastmaster meeting, table topics. The purpose of table topics is to give our members practice in speaking and thinking on their feet. Speaking on your feet is a very good skill you can use throughout your working career, and you can also use it at home. This evening, keeping with the general theme of sustainability, I'll be asking a few questions. Before I go into that, before I ask for volunteers, I'll just go over three things. One is, you can take 30 seconds to think, gather your thoughts before you start to answer. Two, when you see the green light, you know you have reached your goal, and you can wrap up. When you see the red light, you have to finish within 30 seconds, otherwise you will be disqualified. So, before much ado, volunteers, who would like to volunteer? Okay.
Table topics master, I accept the, actually, I haven't got a question yet, so what? Do I pick a number, or?
What does the term sustainable living mean to you? And based on your understanding, what are some ways it could show up in practice?
I feel like I got the lottery question, because I was a sustainable living major at NUM, so I have a degree in this. I basically think sustainable living is a combination of food security, energy security, and building science, so that we can have, basically, all of life is supported by those three things, energy, food, and, you know, environment, a nice building to live in. So that's sustainable living, and it's also a daily practice. It's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's not gonna happen today, but it's a lifelong practice, and I think we are on the path. It's not like we are, there's this unending goal that we'll never achieve, and I think we are all ready on that goal, on that path. And just, that's, that's shown through passive homes, that's shown through compost. There's a, there's a huge amount of compost in Fairfield right now. There's rows, just miles of compost, organic grade compost. And, yeah, there's just some really good examples of it, and I can go into all of them, but those two, passive homes and composts, are just local examples of sustainable living. And, yeah, I'm optimistic, because it's already, it's now, sustainable living is happening right now. So, thank you.
Guest are welcome also.
If you live five to 10 minutes walking distance from your work, would you drive or walk, and why?
If I live five or 10 minutes from my work, I would like to walk, given the conditions that the weather would be easy and not a winter time ordeal. It certainly would be much more healthy, and it would help the general pollution of the environment to be able to use the cars less. However, I would reserve the ride if it was raining or inclement weather, that I would hold up being able to drive in that case. I'd also would like the option of bicycling, I think that would be a very efficient alternative to walking on such a short distance. So, that's basically my take.
Don't be shy. When you think of your, of your day-to-day actions and that of some of your friends, what is one change that you would, could make for 2018 that would help address the issue of climate change?
I get 30 seconds to think about it. For myself and for my friends, what should we do to help address climate change? It's a question that just about anybody could, could think about. I have already the example in front of me of friends of mine who are working for the Sierra Club and other groups, who are very interested in the environment, in the protection of the environment, and otherwise taking care of the planet. They express their desire to help by running membership drives, by holding educational programs, by showing movies in town and around, and by, where necessary, going to the State House and lobbying, or otherwise making their viewpoints known to legislators, to the state government, and occasionally, I think, to the federal government. And these people deserve my thanks and others' thanks for that. A little more close to home, each, each person can think of how much they drive, what they drive in, what kind of a car do they own, how will they travel when they're not in their car? Do they take walking, bicycle, or some other means of transportation? So, these are, you know, fairly straightforward things, not any surprises in what I'm saying, but they are something that any of us can do. Thank you.
Yeah, and with this, I'll hand you over to Toastmaster.
All right. So we always like to invite our guests to come up and go through that ordeal, I mean, that exercise. But what we can guarantee is, when you come to Toastmasters and you do this on a weekly workout basis, is that your muscles get limber, smooth, and stronger, and so instead of being terrified at the thought of up here, or your mind is going blank between the ears, you actually start to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time in that situation. And it happens all the time throughout your, throughout life. Every, every one of us run into things where we're put on the spot, and you wanna have that, be able to, like I say, walk and chew gum at the same time. So thank you very much, Fraser, those were excellent questions. Thank you for our people that came up, and our, our guests who put that out there. Anyway, you can come to our Toastmasters meetings every Tuesday evening, and you can start to get some practice yourself. All right. At this point, we're going to shift gears, and we're going to actually introduce someone that I have been hearing about in advance as to, this is gonna be a treat. I actually had someone tell me, if you have not heard Troy Van Beek speak, you're in for a treat. That's exciting, that's exciting. So let me introduce our guest speaker for the evening, Troy Van Beek, CEO of Ideal Energy, Inc., here in Fairfield. With 12 years of high-paced military and paramilitary service, Troy has a deeply intimate history in some of the world's most hostile environments. Drawing on this experience, Troy has transformed a high-profile background with the U.S. Special Forces into providing world security through clean energy. Troy possesses natural talent as a leader and thrives in environments of challenge. He has extensive experience in elite-level team management, and is passionate about supporting individuals and communities in excelling. Today, Troy uses the leadership skills gained as a U.S. Navy SEAL instructor and team leader for successfully deploying solar energy systems and managing Ideal Energy's growing expertise through the changing energy paradigm. Please help me warmly welcome Troy Van Beek.
Thank you for having me here. I'm gonna start by saying, leadership, the ability to positively affect one's mind, and as a consequence, have a positive effect on yourself and those around you. Leadership, leadership, leadership. Leadership, leadership, leadership. I say these words again and again, because they're empowering. I say to myself, am I inspired by the things that I do? Am I inspiring myself to be a positive leader in my community? Am I inspiring others? Am I being a role model for those around me? Am I empowering them to be leaders? Am I in love with my community? Do I love it like my home? My passion is for this leadership. I'm hungry for it. I wanna be inspired by it. Sometimes I am, but when I'm not, I'm not gonna wait for it. I wanna tell you a little bit about Ideal Energy. Damn it, I'm sorry. I put so much into this because I want to really get something out, or something that I wanna communicate with you. So, my name is Troy Van Beek. I'm the CEO and founder of Ideal Energy. We're a solar design and installation firm right here in Fairfield, Iowa. I wanna tell you a little bit about the team, but first, I'm gonna qualify that, give you a little context about my background, and what inspired me to be part of the Ideal Energy team. So, I spent nine years in the U.S. Navy SEAL teams, spent 12 years in military and paramilitary activity. I traveled all over the world training and operating with the SEAL teams, and then I spent several years in Afghanistan. I was on a high-risk personal protection detail in Afghanistan. I was a lead sniper for, for the presidential detail for Haaland Karzai. I took those skills and I, I moved to Africa, and I started a high-risk personal protection There were certain circumstances that happened between these incidences that I progressed through my life. There were things that really transformed me in each one of these situations. And what I really learned from that experience was, was that I had a unique perspective on conflict, on why we end up in conflict. This is the environment that I was existing in, and these challenges that I had in these particular situations got me understanding that there was one other thing, that I needed change, and it started with me. I wanted change in the world, and that started with me. And I found myself drawn to Fairfield. There was a degree being offered here, one of the first four-year degrees in sustainability, and I was drawn to it. So I came back to get educated. And the crazy thing was, when I started this education, there wasn't any talk of sustainability. When I told my parents that, that I was getting the green sustainability, they were like, "What's that?" Matter of fact, the university itself was not fully committed to it yet. They take, they put the department in an old science wing, science wing of the university. And I did several classes there, and as I was getting my education, I realized that they weren't living up to it. So I decided to drop out of school, but I didn't wanna leave sustainability. So I asked if I could general contract at the university and help bring up the quality for the students, and I did that, along with one of my, my buddies from my class. We became general contractors for the school. We started implementing some of our projects that we had been working on, and we implemented a biodiesel processor that now created a revenue stream for the university. We took the wind generator that we created in, in this class, and we put it up on a pole, and we powered the classroom now by renewable energy. We installed skylights in all the classrooms and all the offices, and reduced the lighting by 95%. We took the old science classroom, we put in a garage door, and created a micro enterprise So now we had a sustainable living department, and that was pretty cool. And because of that, I was asked, and I think it was because of this, by Mayor Ed Malloy, to actually participate in the Go Green Commission. This was a 12-month crafting of a sustainability plan for the community, and I was honored to be part of this. So as a process of going through this, I started getting integrated with the community, with the business leaders, with city council, with all the major players in the community, and I was inspired. Because coming from a background in the elite special forces, I understood team, but never in this particular regard, because I'd been living out of a suitcase for the last 13 years. Coming to Fairfield and being embraced by the community, taking advantage of the opportunities that were offered to me through the university, and then migrating into this opportunity with the city and implementing these changes, really made me realize that I had another team here. I was hungry for that team. And I saw this sphere of influence growing through the university and then through the community, and this was really inspiring for me. It was a revelation in my mind that I had a team here. So I came back to the university and I continued my education, and while I was there, one of the professors was, was always throwing out these crazy ideas, Lonnie Gamble. He'd always say, he would always say, "That's a million-dollar idea. Someone would just pick up that check I just wrote." And he'd keep throwing out these ideas, and after coming back from this conversation, or coming back from the Go Green Commission, and him saying that, I grabbed the idea when he said energy efficiency. I grabbed that idea right out of the air, and I went back to my wife, and I said, "We're gonna start an energy company." I started Ideal Energy. So this was the height of the recession, and I, before graduating, started a company called Ideal Energy, right in Fairfield, Iowa. And it wasn't easy. It took us over a year before we kinda redirected into renewable energy, and that is what we saw as the future. So we built up this company, but we actually had one of the professors help us to do that. I said, "Can you help us write a business plan?" And he did. He, he said, "Okay, if we're gonna do this, to be profitable, you're gonna have to make a million dollars in revenue." In one year, we made a million dollars in revenue. And I laugh about that, because that was a million-dollar check I pulled out of the air. We weren't thinking about it when we wrote that, but that's what happened, and kinda blew me away. So with this, we started building this momentum. We're, we're creating this energy company, and it's, it's starting to get recognized for all these first projects. We're building first, and first, and first again. Of course, we were one of the only solar companies in the state, so it was kind of easy, but we started breaking our own records. And we kept doing this until we were recognized, and I was asked to go to the White House three times and speak to the Department of Energy on separate occasions. And we took that influence that we were creating, and we came back and we continued to do bigger projects. And then we were asked to go to COP21. COP21 in Paris, France, was the climate talks, where they, they had 196 countries come together and discuss solutions for our planet, for our species. This brings me to one of the aspects that I learned in the Middle East and through my military experiences, why do we go to conflict? And the way I see it, and why I've been creating my business, is because of scarcity. Scarcity is always the reason. When we have abundance, we don't need to go to war, and that abundance is our goal. Our mission at Ideal Energy is to bring your utility bills to zero, or as close to it as possible, and in so doing, create abundance. And we're doing this time and time again. We start with residences and get rid of their utility bill. We go to a bigger company, and then a bigger company, and a bigger company, and we keep expanding our knowledge. So our team has been growing. Fantastic, amazing, creative individuals in our team that have been gaining this knowledge base about how we do this, and how we continually evolve this industry. And I, I can just tell you, I'm extremely proud of this team. So I want to leave you with another story that is about an inspiration, inspirational It was back when I was still a tadpole, when I was going through SEAL Team training, I was, yeah, Naval Special Warfare Center, and we were stationed around a pool, we're at the deep end of this, of this training pool, very deep pool, built for torture. Had half of my class going around the pool, and the other half in the pool. They've got all their BDUs on, their combat boots, and they're pushed into the pool to simulate like a down helicopter, or a man overboard. Or a man overboard. And they're supposed to have this mission, where they're supposed to take their boots off, tie them in a knot, put them around their neck, take their pants off, tie the ends in a knot, inflate them over their head, and then use them as a flotation device. But beyond that, it was more of a torture. Because there was all these Navy SEAL instructors in this pool. And they were pushing everybody in. And when you, when you can't swim, then you start to drown. So my mission was to sit on the edge of this pool, at attention, and watch, and make sure nobody drowns. And as we're doing this, as the instructors are swarming like sharks, I see Hiley come out of the pile and come up to the surface of the water and start swimming towards me, or at least trying to do so. And I lock eyes with him, and I'm thinking, "He's not gonna make it." For every stretch that he makes outward, he goes a little bit deeper. I looked over at one of the instructors, and I'm trying to get the nod to go and help Hiley, because he's going down for sure. And then he reaches, between me and another student, and reaches out to hand something to Hiley, and Hiley reaches up for that, and the instructor lets go, and that rubberized brick takes him to the bottom. And I thought, "Wow, how sadistic was that?" That was incredible. What a moment to witness that he had the audacity to do that to that student. And I'm thinking, "Hiley's not letting go of that brick." And I look over at the instructor, and he looks back at me and he says, "You think he's coming back up?" And I look down at the water, and I saw this bubble of air break the surface. And I said, "No, he's not coming back up." And he grabs my mask from me, and he goes down to the water, and he looks in the water, and he was at the bottom. He goes, "Nope, he's not coming back up." He hands me his sunglasses, grabs my mask, and goes into the water. It seemed like forever since that bubble came to the surface. And finally, Hiley comes out like a wet noodle. And he grabs, I grab onto Hiley and help the instructor get him onto dry part of the concrete. And Hiley, I'm thinking, is dead. There's nothing left in him. And I stand back, and as soon as the instructor does revive him, the first thing out of his mouth is, "I'm not quitting!" And I was stymied, stood beside myself, thinking, "What sheer willpower did that take to have that so ingrained in his mind that he came back from blackness and said, 'I'm not quitting'?" I think of the sheer leadership that he had over his own mind in that the effect that that individual had on me in that moment. I can only imagine Hiley going, "I'm not gonna quit, I'm not gonna quit, I'm not gonna quit, I'm not gonna quit, I'm not gonna quit." Leadership, 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 leadership. Leadership is the ability to positively affect your mind and have, as a consequence, have a positive effect on you and those around you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Troy. We'll be hearing from Troy later. We'll have some interview questions and just get a little bit more from him. I'm looking forward to that very much. I think we're a little bit ahead of time. And so, we might as well go ahead and do our next phase, and then we'll have more time at the end, okay? So, at this point, Dennis, do you want to go ahead and assemble your group?
Yep.
Okay, great. I'll just describe it real quick. Call him up for...
Yep, sure.
Okay, so anyway... Yeah, Miranda. We just thought, since this is a Toastmaster open house, we'd like to hear just a just a little sampling of some of our members. This is brief, but it's kind of poignant. I know, you guys gotta come up lineup this way. This is not rehearsed, as you can see. And it's very, very... Okay, and then Dennis is going to be our panel moderator, and I will hand that off to you, Dennis, and you can describe what you'll be doing here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you, Troy. It was an excellent speech. We all enjoyed it. Now is the time that we will be talking about a little bit more the variety of members, different experiences in Toastmasters. And we want them to share their experience with you and how everything can relate to each other. I will be asking questions in order of their last names. First of all, we're starting with Miranda Gothard, our honored guest speaker. And our honored Toast... We have all three here. First of all, we'd like to be knowing the following. What are your biggest challenges in life? And how do you plan to use Toastmasters to conquer these challenges?
It's true. My initials are M.G. OMG, you hear, OMG. Oh my God. I'm thirty now. A third of my life ago, I was diagnosed with bipolar, and it was because I believed I was God. Straight up and down. Read the good books, someone's gotta come back and do it. And so, I'm in Toastmasters, they've convinced myself that I'm not, or have a jolly good time telling you why it's fun to pretend I am with me. Every day, it becomes more and more real. Right? Whether it's a YouTube commercial, it's... Did that YouTube just really say that? Did anyone else? Well, of course, we all heard that YouTube commercial. Silly reference to say that I often forget we've all been sharing this same world with each other, right? We've all had experiences. I'm not the only one who's been alive on this planet for ten years. Challenges of Toastmaster, right, is to speak more effectively. To speak in such a way that I'm not afraid of saying words. Miranda, I have the right to remain silent. See, in my, in my mind, coming here to meet Mr. Troy tonight, it's like, ooh. The government's been paying attention to everything I do. I do ridiculous things all day long. Somebody up there must be getting paid to be paying attention to me, right? No one's ever told me. I, I get, when you're crazy at twenty years old, the government pays you to stay alive. Well, Social Security, you get that for being crazy, you know? Who's that light? Oh, okay, green light. And so that's it, OMG, thank you, Toastmaster.
Thank you, Miranda. We enjoyed it. To clarify, these are honored panel members, not guest speakers. So... My staggering there. Actually, Miranda is doing a great job. She's beginning as a very new member. We've had her join recently, towards the end of last year. She's doing a great job at progressing as a speaker. Susanna, you'll be up next.
All right.
Thank you. As an experienced Toastmaster, what advice would you give new potential members in the audience when they begin as a new Toastmaster?
My first piece of advice is just do it. Toastmasters has been around for decades. It's been all over the world. And over the decades that Toastmasters has been in existence, the whole process of supporting people to improve their public speaking skills has been developed and refined over time. And so, when you join, you get your first book of projects, speaking projects, that lead you step by step through the process of developing speaking skills. And so, they've really refined this, they've really developed it. So you have a fantastic track to follow for improving your public speaking skills in bite-sized chunks. My second piece of advice is just relax and enjoy it. You may be a little intimidated, but the club that we have here in Fairfield is absolutely fantastic. We have some real deeply supportive and knowledgeable leaders, speaking of leadership, in our club. And it's really a safe environment. People are supportive, people understand, people have been through it themselves, and you feel the support. And so, I've, you know, I've been able to take risks and talk about things that I would not feel comfortable talking about in the general public. See what works, what doesn't. You get to practice, you get feedback from the group. And it's just a fantastic opportunity. And my third piece of advice is the same as my first, which is, just do it.
Thank you, Susanna. Susanna has been a very supportive member. She's helped me out. I started exactly one year ago in this club, and she's really helped all of us learn more and more together, progress. And she's very empowering to everybody in our community. So we really appreciate the work you do, Susanna. Kudaifa. Time, your time now.
Yeah.
How long have you been in Toastmasters? What inspired you to join?
Okay, thank you. I think this is my third month, third or fourth month. And actually, I just followed her advice before I here. I just did it. Actually, the third one, not the first one. Since it's my second language, I was struggling every time I speak everywhere. I've learned English for about fourteen years in my country before I come here. But it's like something, someone who learned baseball from a book without any practicing. So he knows all these rules, he knows everything about the game, but he never see or the field. This is one of my challenges, to stand in front of fifty or more you, or native speakers and speak in their tongue. A few months ago, for me, it was like when you speak with this. And you try to stay away from that sound or letter that you cannot pronounce. I had thousands of words that I had problem with them. The first problem was when someone asked me, "What are you doing in your life?" I say, "I'm a developer." He said, "What?" Okay, "I'm a developer." "Yeah, yeah, what?" "Developer, okay, I'm a developer." "I'm a developer, I'm a developer, I'm a developer." "Okay, I'm a software engineer." I came here to practice with someone who first understands all English grammars and practice, and also giving suggestion to someone speaks is not something easy. You may attend our Toastmasters meetings in the future, and you will find or have that challenge of writing a suggestion to someone maybe speaks for ten, fifteen years. And you have to practice, not only speaking, but more giving suggestion or find mistakes as well. I wish I will meet all of you soon here, but it will be that side. Soon. And thank you very much for everyone.
Thank you, Kudaifa. We really enjoyed having you begin in the club last year. We really like the progress we see. Kudaifa really adds a great element to our club. He has a real talent and enjoyment for calligraphy. And he also really brings with that cultural aspect. With English being his second language, it's really great to see how fast he's progressed, being able to come out and speak in front of everybody. And it's really great to see him and his family make everything a new home here. And he's really progressing the way that, really inspiring to see the way that our country is. We're all melting pot, and his family. So it's a great example of the American dream. Really just coming here, being the smartest you can be, being the best you can be. So we appreciate you. Thank you, Kudaifa. You're doing well for time. So we're gonna be...
Thought we could do one more speaker.
Absolutely.
And I think it should be you.
Okay.
So, one year ago, as you said,
Yeah.
You were a brand-new member, and now you're the president of this very distinguished club. So what have you noticed in this year and since you've become president in terms of changes for yourself, confidence, and leadership?
First of all, last year, exactly at this time was when I started. I walked into a meeting with no clue about what Toastmasters was. I just met Jean randomly a week earlier at a public event, and she told me, "Hey, Toastmasters is a really good thing for you, since you're working along the great business in town." So I decided to show up and see what Toastmasters is about, what can I benefit from it. And I realized that the sky's the limit, really, with Toastmasters. There are competitions locally, in the area, in the state, in the whole country, in the entire world. And those really make you progress as a speaker. Most importantly is that the club is really supportive here. It's not really, it doesn't really feel like a very formal environment. Every time I show up, it's formal enough to be on time, to make sure that you're, there's a structure. I should clarify that, otherwise, it just destroyed all of our credibility. Terrible president. But really, it feels like a family, because we show up every Tuesday. We're ready to support each other. We're at very different levels in our speaking ability, our skills, and how experienced we are. So that really helped me progress, being able to see people who are more experienced, people who are newer. And just having that variety really helps me out. In terms of my self-progressing, I would say I still have a way to go often. When I look at the recordings on YouTube, I think, "Wow, did I really say that?" But I realize that I really see improvements constantly. I do have some bad habits about speaking quick at certain parts, and Toastmasters really helps me with that. Most importantly, though, in terms of leadership, which I really enjoy Troy emphasizing on that. Leadership is something we all need to really focus on to really... to really lead ourselves, our state, our nation, the right direction, and the world. And Toastmasters really made me appreciate the difference between there's a leader and then there's just an official. And there's a difference between the two. Because a leader is someone who shows an example, somebody who plans things out and plans to succeed always, and always sticks to the goal no matter what happens. And whenever I realized that people wanted me to be the president of this club, first thing I thought was, why? I just started. It sounds ridiculous when they ask me, "Oh, you want to be president." They said, "You listen to people, you like to hear your thoughts, you're good at compromising," so I said, "Okay, I'll do it." And since then, I really have gained appreciation for being able to see how much work it really is to manage people, manage an event like this. You really have to pay attention to all details, gotta be really organized, gotta be on time for things, something I wasn't so good about doing in college. Really, there's so many benefits, the sky's the limit. And in this club, as any Toastmasters club, you're always encouraged to be an officer when you are called upon to do so. And every Tuesday, there's an opportunity for table topics, for formal speeches. There's so much, I could keep talking about all day, but it's time for me to cut it short and get on with the rest of our meeting. Next up.
Now, we're gonna have a sample of a third muscle group. So, what we've seen so far, we've had the impromptu speaking, the table topics, that's the, you know, okay, you don't know what kind of pitch is coming, you just gotta be ready to hit the ball no matter what it is. That's one muscle group. I use muscle, you know, analogies. Communication and leadership fitness. Secondly, we had an excellent example of a prepared speech. And that was our featured speaker, Troy Van Beek. And this is where you have the opportunity to work on a speech, write it, throw things out, add things in, work it, hone it, and then present it. So, that's a different muscle group. Now, the third muscle group is what we call evaluation. And it's actually, Toastmasters says this is the foundation for Toastmasters. And it's, everyone you've heard say that we're a very supportive group. This is how we support each other, is that we give each other feedback that both encourages someone to continue to speak, and then also gives them maybe some ideas, some areas where they might consider improving, some suggestions. And it's always the evaluator's opinion. The speaker is sitting there listening. The speaker may be thinking, you know, I don't know that I agree with that. But that's okay, just hear what's said, and if it resonates for you, then you know you can incorporate that into your next speech. In our meetings, we have someone who evaluates personally and comes up and does a presentation, but everybody in the audience fills out a little slip that has a personal evaluation themselves. And so, the speaker goes home after the meeting, you know, it's time for milk and cookies, and pulls out their little slips and gets to just read and feel good, you know, like, oh, great, I love what you said, blah, blah, blah. You might wanna, you know, take your hand out of your pocket, just as an idea. So, it's very sweet that way. Troy has been told in advance that we wanted to do this piece. And so, we do have a speech evaluator, who is one of our more experienced Toastmasters. He is also our current vice president of education, which is the next level down in terms of officership from the president, it's a very responsible role. And he is going to give the evaluation for Troy, for our featured speaker. So, Emery Van, I mean, Emery Van Steiner.
Thank you, Jean. And I want to thank each of you for coming out and joining us tonight. It makes all of us in the club feel good to see this room full of people. And we especially thank you, Troy, for sharing your story with us and helping us really draw this kind of heartwarming crowd. As Jean said, evaluation is at the heart of Toastmasters. It's one of the most powerful parts of the program to help us improve as speakers. But as she also said, and as Dennis pointed out, we are here to provide a supportive and safe environment for you to develop your speaking skills in. So, our evaluations are honest, but we hope and work hard to make sure they're never harsh. We want everyone to feel like they learned something, they got straight feedback, but they don't go home feeling beat up and saying, "I'm never going back to that again," or something. So, don't worry, Troy. Now, I'm going to use an advanced manual called Speaking to Inform as the criteria from that for my evaluation, just to give me a track to run on. And that's how most evaluations are done. In the manuals, you have a certain type of speech and criteria laid out that you should achieve or go by in that speech. And I think this one will fit Troy's speech fairly well. So, I'm going to go through those criteria and speak briefly on each of them. What made the speech interesting? To me, it was Troy's personal story. He has a wonderful sincerity in how he stands before us and just speaks from the heart, and that comes through very strong. And then, he's also been privileged and earned the right to have some experiences very few of us have had. So, it was wonderful to get his firsthand insights into that special forces type of experience all over the world. How effectively did the speech opening capture and hold your attention? For me, very effectively. He started out, "Leadership, leadership, leadership." That grabbed us. We wanted to know more, what's he gonna say next? So, kudos on that, Troy. And then, he went on to define leadership as the ability to positively affect your mind and have a positive effect on those around you. How comfortable and familiar did the speaker appear to be with his material? I have no doubt in Troy's self-confidence, but for whatever reasons, maybe the crowd, he stumbled a few times. He just didn't have it totally. And I've been there many times myself, and the only cure I know is practice, rehearsals before the speech, and you get over that. Organizational structure of the speech, he had an introduction on leadership. Then, he told us his personal story about ideal relating to the special forces and how he developed a, or understood that he had a special perspective on conflict and what causes that came out of his special forces experience. And then, he returned to relate to his early points of leadership. And then, he closed by repeating leadership, leadership, leadership and the definition, which is why I'm able to remember it right now, and I think most of you are. So, very well-structured speech, Troy. How did the speaker encourage the audience to learn? I don't, I didn't really see how that criteria applied to the speech. What could the speaker have done to make the talk more effective? As strong as the opening was, to me, it was just a little bit stilted, and you didn't really get going with your speech until you relaxed and started telling your own story. Why you came to Fairfield, how you came to start the company, and your experiences in building it, and your experiences in the special forces. And I think you had everybody in the room with you at that point. How to make it a little better, I would say, move about the stage. You were pretty much rooted right here, and it would've been good, maybe for different parts of your speech, to stand here, and then move here, and move here. That would also, in a room with this many people, help you relate better to more people in the audience. What are the speaker's strongest assets in informative speaking? Again, your sincerity, you projected a warm personality and good humor. There were a lot of laughs, which is almost always a plus. Your personal experiences and your ability to tell them, and the strong structure of your speech. So, great speech, we'd like to hear you again. Thank you, Troy.
Emery's one of our best evaluators. You see how that was done? It was just positive, but it was still, there were specifics. So, Troy, I'm sure felt like Emery was paying attention, was listening, and gave him specific positive feedback. He's drinking water, like probably to calm himself. Okay, well, we're coming down the track, and I'm delighted we'll have a little more time with Troy. Do want to just follow up a little bit from our panel, and we're gonna switch out of Toastmasters here, but just because this is our open house. We just wanna address a couple of things. Why Toastmasters, and then, why Golden Speakers, Toastmasters of Fairfield? So, Toastmasters, you've seen, it's a premier, it's somewhere between ninety and a hundred years old, and it's a communication and leadership organization. In fact, the tagline, and this is so great that Troy said, "Leadership, leadership, leadership," is, the tagline for Toastmasters is Toastmasters, colon, where leaders are made. Because communication is actually a bit of a subset. All leaders need to be able to communicate, but then on top of that, we want leaders. And we have to admit that leaders and communicators are never more needed than now in our world. So, let me tell you, just, I have, usually I get some questions about Toastmasters. You've gotten some idea, and of course, I'm like Dennis, I could talk a lot. And I'm usually told, "Jean, hold it on the enthusiasm, don't talk quite so much." So, I'm gonna try to do that. But there are some questions that come up, and I just wanna address them really quickly. So, one thing in terms of thinking about possibly getting involved with Toastmasters is people will say, you know, I just, I don't know if I have the time. You know, I'm really busy. Okay, is there anybody in this room that's not busy? Okay, there you go. So, we're all busy. And the thing is, is that Toastmasters is a way to work on yourself. How often do you get to do that in a very established way? And my feeling is, I'm just gonna say this, is don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. You've heard that? When I started Toastmasters, I had started a new job, I felt like I don't need any more stress, and I already have. I wanna do this, but it's gonna have to be fun. And I think Susanna said, talked about fun. You know, things that are good for you, you don't necessarily have to be odious. It's a twenty-five cent word, right? They don't have to be odious, they can be fun. And I just decided, okay, this is gonna have to be fun because that's what I need in my life. And I'm gonna give it the time that I have. So, you know, you have to put some time into it, but it doesn't have to be perfect, and don't get choked up on that. So, that's my answer to that. Everyone's got the time, and you can bring your grocery list, because we're in Hy-Vee. So, after this meeting is over, you can go out, you can shop. So, it's a combined thing. Hy-Vee likes it, we like it, ice cream aisle is right there, so you can, it's all good. Okay, another thing that comes up is, people will say, "I'm not a public speaker, so why would I wanna join Toastmasters? I'm not a public speaker." Well, I address that by saying, humans achieve things in groups. That's really where things happening. We had Troy telling us about looking for those teams, because he's looking for the groups that he wants to use to help achieve something. And groups happen everywhere. You know, they happen in work, they happen in civic organizations, they happen in churches, you know, homeowners associations, whatever it is, all kinds of organizations, it even happens in homes. You know, families are groups, okay? Sometimes, they're the most complicated groups. Troy talks about, you know, getting fascinated and looking at conflict. Okay, families, you know, total conflict situations. And so, developing leadership and communication skills, even just for your family communications, totally good. That's what Toastmasters will do. Now, I wanna switch, there are a lot of questions, and we're gonna break, and we're gonna have, there's all the food here. This is behind door number one. All the food is back here. And we're gonna break, and we're gonna, you know, we'll socialize, and we can talk, and you can talk to people that have these little badges on stuff. You know, they're Toastmasters, you can talk to them. And get more questions answered. I do wanna speak about why Golden Speakers, Toastmasters, because this is really where we are, humbly speaking, you know, at the top of the heap. Okay, so what does that mean? So, you see all these ribbons, and you go, "Yeah, yeah, ribbons." Well, ribbons mean something. So, let me just tell you quickly that Toastmasters, as an organization, worldwide organization, has ten goals every year that they ask clubs to try to achieve, and they're not easy. There's projects, people that are completing their projects and growing themselves, or also contributing to credit for the club. So, a club that is doing well, the members are growing, they're completing projects, and the club gets credit for that. And there's membership goals, and there's officer training, and there's a number of things that have to be accomplished. If a club gets five of those, and there are clubs that, you know, work to get five of those, it's a distinguished club. If they get five or six, if they get seven to eight, they're a select distinguished club. Ooh, you're starting to, you know, float to the top, the cream is moving up. And then, the most exclusive, sweetest spot are the president's distinguished. And those are the ones that the clubs achieve nine or ten goals, okay? Now, I'm getting ready to blow your mind. Okay, so, we're already, we're already, I'm not, no, we're in the cream. Obviously, I wouldn't be bragging if I, if we weren't already in the nine to ten goal range. So, you see all these things that are president's distinguished, presidents, just look at that, look at that, look at that. I mean, that's like going back in time. I think, no, we have another ribbon to go up? We almost can't get our ribbons up fast enough. Okay, so, we have all of those, so we get, we really, you know, focus on that. And that means our members are progressing the way they want to. But in Toastmasters, we are in District Nineteen. It's basically Iowa, I would say Iowa, a little bit of Nebraska, a little bit of Illinois. Okay, basically Iowa. There are maybe ninety-five clubs in this district. The club that achieves all ten goals, now, you remember, it's a small group that gets that. The club that gets all ten goals and does it first in the Toastmaster year, that's from July one to June thirtieth of the following year, that's a Toastmaster year, gets what's called the traveling lectern. Now, yes, yes, yes. Now, when you come up here, you can see how many times Golden Speakers has been on this. And guess what? We just got it again. So, it's a win-win, it's a win-win. This club, and we're so fortunate, you know, we're here in Fairfield, and we just encourage everyone to check this out because it is a premier club, and we're known throughout the state because of what we do here and how we help our members. So, that's the reason to join. I won't talk about cost, because there is a cost. Not much, very little. Didn't we figure it out, it was less than two dollars an hour? Something like that? I mean, we didn't quite get down to the minutes, you know, we had to. But anyway, so let me just tell you, in case you're interested. Who's gonna, who has applications here in the meeting? This is not guests, this is members. Who's gonna be? Who's going to be? Dan's going to have one, that's Dan Craig. Oh, Dan Craig is our videographer, doing a great job over there. Will has one. So that, that handsome gentleman, yes, our timer there, is there anyone else that has it? Emery's able to speak on it, right? You can, can you talk on it too? Okay, good, good. All right, so anyway, if you want to join, there's an application, you fill that out, and the cost. So it's, in this club, it's $63 every six months. Toastmasters collects dues all over the world in six-month segments. So tonight, we have a special promotion. Actually, it'll be in effect for a little bit longer. We have a special promotion. Okay, so normally, we're collecting six months, and that would be $63, plus your $20 new member fee. And that gets you your materials, it gets you in the Toastmasters, you know, world database. The next time we do six months, we collect in March, and we collect for April through the end of September. Tonight, we're, we're in January, so what we would say is that we're going to collect for, if you'd like to join, and I'm just giving you this, and you can think about it, if you'd like to join, you could pay for February and March, 1050 plus 1050, it's 21, plus 20 for your new membership, $41. Okay? And you're in, and you're, you know, you're getting ready to enjoy all this stuff that we're talking about. We will need to collect from you for the following six months, but you'll be on the track that everybody, so we're all paying for that, and we're, we're just going. So that's 1050 a month, four meetings, hour and a half, six hours, that's how I got it. Yeah, it was less than $2. Where can you find that much fun for that price? I mean, really? And it is fun. You come about, you come home from Toastmasters, and you are, your head's in a different place than when you left. I guarantee it. Okay, we're good? So that's it. That's all I'm going to say about Toastmasters. I'm really cutting it down, really trying to, but we're here afterwards, so we can talk about it, and we would love to have you in our meetings. With that, I'm going to ask. Thank you. We'd like to have our special guest speaker, Troy Van Beek, come back up, and we're going to ask him some questions. Let's welcome him back up. We're big handshakers. You know, we clap, and we shake, and it's all good. Okay. Now Troy knows some of these, and some of them he doesn't, so let's just, is this all right? We go ahead and ask you the question?
I would like to just break protocol just for a second.
Sure, sure, sure.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and allowing me to muscle through that. There was a lot I wanted to say, and I really felt like I wanted to switch up what I would typically say, and try to stretch new ground, and I did it here in front of all of you, and I definitely stumbled, and I caught myself, but I, I just appreciate it that you were, you know, that you were accepting, so thank you.
I think we'd all really like to hear more about special forces training torture. Wasn't that interesting? But we're not going to do, we're not going to have to go there.
We're not, so.
Well, just, if you can, if it's okay to mention this, I'm just going to say, what projects in Iowa, in terms of sustainability and seeing what's on the horizon, what projects in Iowa do you see as necessary to be accomplished for our state? And possibly, if you're wanting to disclose it, how would Ideal Energy perhaps be moving to address those needs in the state? I'm curious about that.
Well, we've always been moving to address those needs. It's our evolution, so we're, we're always trying to evolve the projects that we're capable of doing, create, create a financing for our customers, make it easy and one-stop. So, you know, we started with a 2 kilowatt, you know, the first time we did an installation. But the interesting thing was actually a grid-independent system. And, and, you know, so that's, that's pretty cool. And we kept evolving that into bigger projects, and commercial projects, and bigger commercial projects. And like I said, we've kept a lot of brain power, a lot of mental horsepower in our operation. Dennis's is an example of that. So that we're capable of developing these bigger and bigger projects. So that's Ideal Energy's participation. We, we consider ourselves as police of the industry. We want to make sure that the industry stays strong, that there are quality projects that are being implemented, that our customers always feel safe going forward with a project with us. We take the time to design it, engineer it, and make sure that it's executed flawlessly.
Excellent.
Troy, what, if an ordinary homeowner would like to say, maybe not totally get off the grid, but basically make enough, bring, create enough electricity to cover one's electrical usage, what would somebody go through with you? How would you set it up and do it?
So we try to make it as painless as possible, as easy for you to participate as we possibly can. So we give, you know, our first interaction is just description, any educational points that you're interested in. We try to answer any questions that are, that you might have. We require 12 months of utility data to be very clear about what it is that we want to replace. We utilize weather data for the last 30 years to predict what your energy usage or your energy production will be in covering your utility bill. So we handle all the permitting, all the interconnection agreements. We're, we'd require some signatures in the process, but you'll see us communicate with you in a real orderly fashion with our project managers, our administration, and we try to take all of that headache away, because it is a pretty arduous process when it, when it has to do with utility company. So we take all that process and make it easy for you. That's what our administration and our, the backbone of our company does. So really, it's just maybe some signatures, and then watch us put it, put the solar up, and then benefit for, for the next 25, 40 years.
Financing that sort of somehow meshes with what you would have been paying for utility bills or anything, how does whatever financing you have for an electrical system, say a photovoltaic system, how does that relate to what you're used to paying?
So we try to work with the different banks of the community. And communication and how we operate with the banks is very specific to the bank itself. So depending on what, who you previously banked with, we can potentially work with them. Oftentimes, if we haven't worked with them, then we can have an educational process with them. We try to make it so that you have immediate savings. So if that's possible with your, with your bank, or we can make a suggestion to another bank that it can make that possible.
Okay. So let's just, you know, this is what's going to happen, because we're going to, I know that questions are going to come up, so what we want to do is, we want to just roll this out, finish it, and then everybody can come and ask Troy questions, and we don't sort of run the risk of holding everybody, you know, hostage, if that's okay, because I saw hands going up. Just want to, so we're going, and we're actually at that point. So I wanted to ask you, this will be the final bit, and then we'll call our president back up, and we'll be done. Just as a call to action for the audience, you're, you know, you're obviously passionate about your work to shift the Midwest energy paradigm, and that is the topic tonight. What, what would you suggest for the audience to do specifically, you know, and Susanna's thinking about that already, that would help with that?
Well, I think that was a perfect example. If you're a resident or you're a business, you can get involved. You can call Ideal Energy, it's free, to get, get evaluated and to see if there's an opportunity for you. Because at Ideal Energy, we're, we say we're giving you the power. You know, so we're in a process of redefining the energy paradigm. We're making it easy financially, and there's no cost to you upfront to get an evaluation of our process, and to see if there's actual benefit to you. So be aware of some of the programs that we're offering. We'll continually try to come up with new programs that'll help make this easy. I expect good things in the, in the future for how we can help develop Fairfield and the communities beyond into the new renewable energy paradigm.
Yes, great. If we, we're going to.
This is such an important subject that we want to talk to him, you know?
Well, sure, sure. And we want you to talk to him, but we're going to, we're going to, I know, it's like, I know, people, people are going to start throwing stuff at me, like, let him speak. So we're, we're going to let him go right now, we're going to finish the meeting, we're perfectly on time. Toastmasters, that's a big, you know, criterion. Thank you, Troy. Thank you so much. You can pick and bolt and ask him questions. With this, at this point, I'm just going to ask our president, Dennis Comas, to come back up and finish this out. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Jean, for helping get all the event going. We really appreciate the help. Troy, excellent speech. Really enjoy hearing more and more, spreading it all to the community for our mission. And furthermore, thank, thank you to all of you out here. We really appreciate you all attending. We hope you enjoyed it, and most importantly, you got to help yourself, free food. Nobody can go wrong with that. So you got to get some after. Thank you to everybody who put it together, all of our officers. Will, be sure to contact Mr. Will Burns, he's got some membership forms. We have various members with him. So please feel free, get some free food, and talk to people.
Also, people, people should feel free to come as a guest as many times as they'd like, and they're free to do the topics, the topics, and to see if they're comfortable, and it's just really easygoing. And thank you so much, Dennis.
Very good. Thanks, Dennis. It's a good point that you brought up. You guys are all welcome to do table topics. Any Tuesday, stop by, please. You're always welcome. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate you all attending. Help yourself to some food, ask questions, join all of us. Thank you.